Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to what, unless there are extremely unforeseen circumstances, is the last ever meeting of the Borough Council's Planning Committee. I'm councillor David Jones, I represent the West Highcliff Ward and I'm the chairman. On my immediate right is councillor Colin Jamieson, who is the vice-chairman and represents Burton Ward. Although members and officers have their names in front of them, because it isn't always easy for the cameras to catch the names, I'll ask the members and officers present to introduce themselves. Before I do, though, it gives me very great pleasure to welcome back to the committee Mrs Sophie Wright, who was here for many years, left us and has come back with a new name and two offspring to help pay our pensions in the years to come. So, welcome back Sophie. And now we'll start with councillor Grace, if you'd introduce yourself.
Councillor Wendy Grace, Town Centre Ward.
Vicky Hallam, councillor for Highcliff Ward.
Sophie Morsley, Principal Planning Officer.
David Hodges, Development Management Team Leader.
Joan Lynch, Head of Planning.
Daniel Lucas, Principal Planning Lawyer.
Daniel Rina-Farhey, Democratic Services Officer.
Councillor Peter Hall, Town Centre Ward.
Councillor Denise Jones, Grange Ward.
Thank you very much. I'll just take a few moments to run through the procedure we'll be following this evening. All the members present have each received comprehensive planning reports in respect of the applications before us while in advance of this meeting. Each application will be introduced by the case officer and the plans and photographs and all things will be displayed on the screen behind me. When the presentation is concluded, I will ask those members of the public who have asked to address the committee to come to the end of the chair, to the end of the table opposite me, and you will each have three minutes. Speeches must not be derogatory and must be confined to material planning matters, and in the interests of fairness, those three minutes will be strictly timed and enforced. Once the public speaking is finished, from that point, we can accept no further input, no letters or plans or anything else can be circulated to the committee at this point. I will then ask members if they have any questions of fact relating to the evidence which they have just heard. Once all the questions have been asked, I will open the matter for debate. Provided a motion is proposed and seconded, we will move to a vote, and that vote, save in the very exceptional circumstances as defined in the council's constitution, will be final. I hope that you will find the procedure easy to understand. If there are any difficulties, the officers, the vice-chairman or myself will be pleased to answer your questions after the meeting. We would ask you all please to remain silent while the meeting is in progress. We'd ask you also to remember to switch on your mobile phones when you leave the meeting, because of course you'll all switch them off now, or make sure that they're turned to silent ring. One or two items of housekeeping. We do not have any fire practices scheduled for tonight, so if the alarm does ring, we'd ask you to act as if it were a real emergency and to leave the room by the double doors there, out into the fresh air outside, or through those double doors, out into the foyer and then through the double doors in which you entered and outside. Thank you very much. I have now just to read something which just goes to show how things have changed. This meeting may be filmed by the council for live and/or subsequent broadcast online. At the start of the meeting, I'm confirming now that part or all of the meeting will be filmed. The footage will be on the website for a minimum of six months, and a copy will be retained in accordance with the council's data retention policy. The images and sound recording may also be used for training purposes within the council. By your presence within this room, you are deemed to consent to being filmed and recorded. As chairman, I have the right to stop the recording at any time if I think any individual is going to be unfairly prejudiced by continuing to record. If that is the case, I will make that very clear. Right, thank you very much. If there is no further housekeeping... Oh, one other thing. If you need the facilities, they're out there. There's a disabled facility immediately to your left, and further down through the end of that corridor are the ladies. Okay. So we can now move on to the agenda proper. Apologies for absence.
Yes, Chairman. I've got apologies from councillors Abbott, Davis and Neil.
Thank you very much. Are there any declarations of interest? Councillor Grace?
A declaration of interest on 4A. Because of the possible procedure of being biased, I feel that I cannot participate in this application.
Thank you very much. That's a declaration of prejudicial interest in that you might be biased, so you will leave the room during debate of that item. Thank you. Councillor Hallam?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yeah, just for openness and transparency, I just wanted to mention against item 4A, that although Tom's Bar has in the past had a stall at the Christchurch Food Festival, which I'm associated with, it is one stall of 140 others, and therefore I feel quite happy to sit here and take part in the debate with an open mind. I've got no pecuniary interest. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Any further declarations? As there are no further declarations, we move to the minutes. Do I see a proposal for the minutes? Councillor? Is that seconded? Thank you very much. Is it your wish that I sign these minutes as a true and correct record of proceedings?
Agreed.
Yes. Thank you very much indeed. So, there are no tree work applications, so we move on to the first planning application, One Church Street and 1A Castle Street. And this is Mr Hodges.
Before you start, Mr Chairman, I might just come in on the agenda, because on page four, it says that reason for referral, the application has been called to the committee by councillor Hall on the basis of concern the proposal may result in a loss of retail outlet. It's only may, and that was put in so that it could be debated fairly. And I've still got an open mind, Chairman, but I think that should... It's on page nine, reason for referral to committee. But also, I do believe there's over 420-something petitions, so it would have automatically come to the committee anyhow. But I still want to make sure, Chairman, that people are aware that I haven't made up my mind, there's still an open mind, and that that's the main thing. Thank you very much.
I think, Councillor Hall, that it is accepted that a member, even if you call it to committee, that doesn't mean to say you have made your mind upon that application, it just means that you are concerned and you feel that this should be debated openly. Okay? Any other comment on that? Okay, Mr Hodges?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, so this is an application for the change of use, a full application, and a listed building consent proposal for the change of use and alterations to number one Church Street and associated operations at number one A Castle Street. So the site's here on the red line plan, and this is the existing shop unit here, and this is number one A on Castle Street. And this is the existing layout of the shop unit, entrance door in here on the junction of the two roads. It's an open area in the middle of the building, and some later partitions put in for changing rooms in the corner, and as you see, store and WC. The proposal, as well as the change of use, involves some physical alterations to the building which require listed building consent, and these are largely in relation to taking out those modern partitions in there, and then fixing this layout, proposed layout as shown with bar areas in here and additional WC. One of the issues, Chairman, we wanted to understand was how air circulation worked with the building, because as you'll see from the location plan, it's effectively landlocked, and so the applicant has provided us with details of how that will work and how that will be ventilated out, and you'll see from the later photos how we show that can be achieved through the back of the building at first floor level and above. But that just shows you a little bit in greater detail indicative layout of the opposed A4 use. And we are not fixing how that is set out decorated, only the structural alterations to the building that require listed building consent, which is mainly related to these changes in the far corner of the building. So looking at the photos of the site, you'll be aware of the location on this junction of Castle Street and Church Street here, and the entrance door at this point here. In terms of the unit itself, the unit has a presence on to both frontages, so it is a characterful and attractive building within the town centre and providing an ongoing use for the town centre for a listed building within the conservation area. Obviously, we attach a good deal of weight to, and it's an important factor in relation to the proposals. This is just to show you some details of how the applicant intends to deal with some of the waste disposal aspects. So the unit at 1A here is under their control, and we are advised that they have a right of access through this arch here, through into the back of somewhat untidy yard in the rear of number one A Castle Street, where they intend to deal with the refuse issues. As referred earlier in relation to the air circulation issues, and this is the rear wall of number one, and shows where units could be located to deal with those particular issues, to provide adequate circulation within the building. And this is just, this is from a rear access path, Chairman, that runs between the rear of the properties on Church Street and Castle Street behind the castle, and a number of the existing units, as you'll see in here, do service air bins from this particular location and wheel them, as I understand, round onto the, onto Castle Street for collection. But that's not feasible with this particular unit, because there is no gate behind this rather tall red brick wall here. So that's a reason for needing to utilise the facilities behind number one A. And this final view is an intended layout that the applicant has provided of an indicative how they would see the proposed use being set out and operated. It's not something we're considering as part of the planning permission, but just given by the applicant to give you a flavour of the intended layout. Chairman, just one or two points just to emphasise. As you'll be aware from your training, the National Planning Policy Framework advises that where there's a presumption in favour of sustainable development, and where you have a development that accords with an up-to-date local plan, this should be approved without delay. And in terms of your local plan policy, as you'll see, policy CH1 has a town, the Christchurch Town Centre vision, Christchurch should continue to act as a key town centre in the borough, be the main focus for retail development. Future growth and development will be based around promoting the town centre as a place to shop, participate in leisure activities, enjoy culture, access key services and enjoy good food and drink. The attractive and historic environment of Christchurch Town Centre will contribute to its future vitality and viability whilst creating a vibrant multifunctional centre, serving the needs of the local community and visitors alike. And a part of achieving this vision is the expansion of the evening economy uses, such as restaurants, cafes, pubs, to be encouraged, especially along Church Street. This will enhance viability of the centre, making it a more vibrant place in the afternoon and evening hours. You'll see, Chairman, in the report, we set out our reasons for recommending the application for approval. It's fully compliant with the old policies, and any concerns about the impacts, we believe can be adequately safeguarded through the suggested conditions. I have one update from the update sheet, Chairman, a further letter of objection that we received yesterday from a resident in Castle Street, number three, I believe, concerned about the proposed refuse arrangements from the rear of Castle Street past their property. And we believe that's adequately addressed in the report and doesn't raise any issues that we haven't considered as part of the proposal in the report before you. So, for the reasons set out in the report, Chairman, we recommend the application to approval.
Sorry about that. I'll ask the officers at the end of the public speaking if there's anything they wish to respond to. We have speaking against the application, Ms Parkinson, is Ms Parkinson here? Mr Gregory, and Mr Reed. Is Mr Reed here?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. In favour, we have Mr Owen, who's the applicant. Mr Owen is here. Mr Kane, the agent, is here. Mr Lloyd, I know, is here, and Mr Dennison. Thank you. So we always start with those against first. So which of Mr Gregory, Ms Parkinson and Mr Reed would like to go first?
Parkinson.
Ms Parkinson. I notice you're incredibly happy at the thought. If you'd like to come to the chair, please. The magic machine turns on when you press the button, as you just saw me do it. I'll give you a few moments to introduce yourself, then the green light in front of you will come on. Then you have three minutes. The yellow light will come on when you have 30 seconds left, and if the red light comes on, I'll ask you to stop. Okay? So if you'd like to take... Oh, and can I take this opportunity of thanking all those who've come to speak to us tonight? We do appreciate you taking the time and the trouble to come, and we do very much value your views. Thank you, Ms Park...
Chairman, councillor and officers, my name's Jane Parkinson. I own flat 1B Church Street, which is directly above.
Chairman, sorry, I can't be very...
Is that better?
Okay, so you still have your freedom.
Thank you. Chairman, councillor and officers, my name's Jane Parkinson. I own the flat directly above, where the application has been made, flat 1B Church Street, above what is now Robertus, as it started. I'm sure no one in this room would wish for a late-night bar to be under their home. The application breaches CH72. The shop unit is extremely viable as retail, and although designated secondary shopping, it's a unique prime A1 site on the way to the priory. It will soon be snapped up by another retailer. The last bar developed in Church Street, the boardroom, has already closed down. Our petition of 425 signatures and a unanimous vote from the Christchurch Citizens Association to object, this application can't be ignored. The application for a bar also includes 1A Castle Street to be operations. It makes no sense, it's, One Church Street isn't big enough to be a bar, that they have to go somewhere else to store waste and prepare food. Ventilation that's been shown is also a problem. Using the rear wall for this will cause smells, vibration and more nuisance directly into the flats above. Moving goods between the buildings will cause chaos. It's already very busy and very dangerous on this pavement, especially for the elderly, disabled, wheelchairs, pushchairs and so on. This is a really busy corner and it breaches saved policy BE4. There's no forecourt outside One Church Street. Smokers and drinkers will stand on the pavement causing obstruction. There's no way customers can be controlled, as they've suggested, and the proposed place for smoking is right outside our front door. Any internal insulation will not soundproof noise from the immediate vicinity. Drinkers will leave in the early hours of the morning. Smokers drinking will hang about directly underneath our bedroom windows. An additional toilet planned in the shop backs onto our stairwell, and it will cause further noise and breaches CH72. The applicants say they've acquired the first floor flat. This is very misleading. They've only rented flat 1A on a short-term rental agreement. They've already contravened planning regulations on it by using it as an office when it's residential. This small shop will get hot and stuffy, the door will get wedged open, and noise will travel and get louder through the evening. There's no back door to this property. The self-closer suggested will not be enforceable. The creep of late-night licensing will also occur, making the situation worse, and this breaches saved policy BE4. One Church Street is a Grade II listed building and has been a historical retail site since 1841, and should remain as such for the future generation of Christchurch. Tipping the balance to too many A4 uses will harm the character of our town centre even more, and this breaches saved policy HE1. Change of use is not in character for this building. In summary, as well as breaching policy, it's quite unkind and unjust to propose a bar under two residential flats when we bought our homes expecting to live peacefully above a dress shop. Humbly request this is refused. Thank you.
Hi, I'm George Gregory. I'm a resident of Christchurch for 20 years, and I'm concerned about the loss of retail in the high street, and I'm ready to begin. The footpath in Castle Street outside number one Church Street is very narrow. There's a steel barrier there already to prevent pedestrians entering the roadway. There's also a bollard and a dimpled area for pedestrians waiting to cross Castle Street. Further along is the entrance to the flats above one Church Street. The distance from the wall to the barrier is 1.2 metres only, and barely enough to get an electric chair along. The applicant appears from paragraph 8.18 of the officer's report to have selected Castle Street as the outside area for smokers. I say appears to, because although there is a claim that a smoking policy has been submitted, there's no evidence of it on any of the documents available on Dorset for you. I believe that there will be a conflict between the smokers congregating there and pedestrians using the narrow pavement of Castle Street, and that will lead to danger to those pedestrians of being forced into the road, and obviously occurring vehicles. I'm surprised that the highways officer has not commented on this matter. Perhaps they do not see the danger because the site plan submitted, which was visible earlier, does not show the narrowness of the pavement well, nor the barrier, nor the bollard. Or perhaps they did not see the proposed smoking policy. NPPF 2018, as amended February 2019, paragraphs 91b, 95a, 108b and 110c, in relation to safe places for pedestrians, would appear to apply. And further work in the way of barriers between the road and pedestrians may be needed to ensure safety. On the matter of appearance, whilst Church Street is not designated primary shopping frontage, the current shop is in its prominent position on the corner, certainly looks to be an integral part of the shopping scene. Thank you.
Again, sir, you'll have a few moments to introduce yourself, and then the clock will start running. Excuse me, sir, could you press the magic button and...
Yeah, the magic button is pressed. I'm started. Like all Christchurch residents, I want to see a thriving town centre with a balanced mix of retail, leisure, residential. At the moment, there's a gross imbalance with an extraordinary number of coffee shops, pubs and catering establishments. The planning committee quite rightly turned down the application by Coffee One, because there were well too many catering establishments than allowed by the town plan. If this application is approved, then of course Coffee One will appeal, and there will be no option but to pass that one too, as far as I can see. There's a good argument that we do not want too many empty shops. Many of the dozens of existing catering establishments are struggling to survive as it is. Some have already folded, many are for sale. Another well-funded competitor, no, not one, but two, would see many more empty shops, not less. Traffic in the town is already frequently gridlocked. One wedding car or delivery van in Castle Street is often enough to bring the whole town to a standstill with fuming trucks and buses and drivers and pedestrians, as already been mentioned. Imagine a successful all-day coffee shop and late-night pub with a series of delivery trucks bang on the crossroads, which is the epicentre of all the jams. The two floors above Robertus are residential. I'm told the first floor is already being used by the applicants for area intended business. The top flat has become unsellable as a direct result of this application, and there are many other residents nearby who are also distressed and disadvantaged by the prospect of an all-day café and an all-night bar under and beside them. We've already mentioned the CCA meeting, which was strangely absolutely unanimous, that none of the people there, I think there were about 80, not wanted to have this development. And lastly, I've been asked to say, is it certain that there's no one on the planning committee who may have a commercial interest as a freeholder, as a developer, or as a catering supplier, for example, who should of course recuse themselves in meeting and from any decision? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we proceed to the, to the supporters of the scheme, I wonder if I could ask the borough solicitor...
I wonder if I could ask the solicitor to make, to comment on the last point because it is absolutely essential that there is public trust in the openness and transparency of this committee. Mr. Lucas.
Yes, thank you, Chair. As a matter of record, I can't call myself a solicitor. I'm actually a barrister, albeit non-praxing, it's a criminal matter otherwise. In the sense of declarations of interest, it's a matter for all of you councillors as to whether or not you feel you've got an interest in a matter which is on your register of declarations, which are currently before you today. So in terms of this item, the simple question is, have you declared anything in your register of interest which you know could in any way, shape, or form fetter your decision in terms of transparency and openness? And if you haven't, and at the outset of this meeting you all declared that you don't have that particular interest, then yes, you can go ahead and vote on the matter with a clear conscience. If, however, there is something on your register of interest which does affect this application, be it you might have shares or something along those lines, or some sort of pecuniary interest in relation to the applicant, or the agent, or a connection, which could give you a sense of bias, that's a common law matter, not a matter for statute law. If there is any sense of bias, it's a common law matter, and that is whether or not a fair-minded and fully-informed, reasonably sort of intelligent person who sits on the clank of on the bus would think that you in any way, shape, or form are acting in a biased fashion. That's the common law test, and if you don't have that bias over, you're entitled to sit and vote. So the question of whether or not you should recuse yourself from the meeting is purely a matter for you upon reflection of your register of interest and indeed the common law test of bias.
Thank you very much. I hope that's made the point clear. I do not believe that anybody round this committee. We have all had very exhaustive training on what used to be the standards framework. I'm not sure what it's called now. But the point that it's not just a pecuniary interest, it is a perception that you might be biased. And I'm sure you've already seen one member leave the room. So I would just say, to the best of my own knowledge and belief, nobody has such an interest. And I would also say that the registers of interest are open for inspection. They're all on the internet, and I'm quite sure that nothing will be untoward, would be revealed. So thank you very much for that. But it is important to clarify that point straight away. Mr. Owen, the applicant, would you like to start off or go later? When you finish, sir, if you'd press the button and turn the light off.
Good evening, councillors. My name's Tom. I'm the applicant. I have lived in the heart of Christchurch for twenty years, and I'm now raising my young family here. I have been in the hospitality industry all my working life. Since twenty sixteen, I have run my own successful bar and hospitality business at a local wedding venue in Sopley, where I have catered for over four hundred weddings so far. When searching for a premises, I carefully studied the Christchurch Town Centre vision to ensure my business concept would align. I was pleased to read that further A4 was being encouraged in Church Street. To deliver a first-class establishment, I have allocated a hundred and sixty thousand pounds towards a refurbishment using specialists to ensure we maintain integrity and character of the property and the surrounding area. I have also secured the flat directly above one Church Street to avoid any potential inconvenience to a direct neighbour. Tom's will be a welcoming, sophisticated, safe, and relaxing space aimed at mature age groups. The interior and furnishings will be of the highest quality and in keeping with the style of the building: marble tabletops, comfortable luxury seating, fresh flowers, and gentle background music. Tom's will be a place where an older lady will feel comfortable having a quiet drink with her daughter, a place where you can come and read the paper and watch the world go by. Our authentic range of delicious bar snacks will be all pre-made and delivered by artisanal local suppliers, which will only require plating up. We shall not be conducting any cooking on-site. To reduce smoking time outside, we will enforce a strict no-drinks-off-the-premises policy. No bins will ever be left on the footpath, and all waste will be quietly placed at the rear of one A Castle Street during daylight hours only. Regarding deliveries, all suppliers carry out extensive safety and risk assessments prior to making any delivery. The only connection between one Church Street and one A Castle Street is the shared bin compound. One A Castle Street will remain A1 retail. I am signing a fifteen-year lease on one Church Street and one A Castle Street. To answer the sole reason this has been brought to committee, I understand a change of use can be deemed as the loss of a precious A1. However, I am not personally responsible for the dramatic change in our consumer shopping habits, courtesy of the internet. And unless we embrace this change, we will have another empty shop in our town. We had confirmation from the letting agent of one Church Street that the only interest in the last six months have been further A4 and A3 applications. I sent this information to all councillors yesterday. Should we be refused planning, this premises will remain unoccupied for the foreseeable whilst I endure a costly and lengthy appeal process. A rather disappointing thought, considering the council are, after all, seeking to be supportive of the development of new businesses in Christchurch. I was delighted by the huge positive response supporting our application, and I believe that together we have an opportunity to strengthen our vibrant community through the creation of this sophisticated, welcoming, sociable space. Thank you, councillors.
Thank you very much, and can I congratulate you on your excellent timing? We have Mr. Kane. When you're ready, sir, if you'd... When you're ready, sir, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Yes, my name's James Kane, chartered town planning consultant. I'm the agent for the application. I have read the officer's report. I have to say that thoroughly details all of the material policy points under which members need to determine this application. It is regrettable that the town has lost a longstanding A1 use, but you will have seen that there has been no interest from any potential A1 users since being marketed over six months ago. And this property is not one that the town can afford to leave empty. One Church Street is a prominent building that will lend itself ideally to a high-end food and drink establishment that would appeal to all demographics. The applicant will be maintaining a historic shopfront, and there will be no external alterations save for the amended signage, which will assimilate with this historic part of the town. The properties are located in a secondary shopping frontage, and therefore CH three is not applicable. The local plan explicitly moved this part of the town from a primary to secondary frontage in order to allow more flexible uses other than A1. And this is what is being proposed. It is CH seven upon which this application turns, and an inspector would be analysing this solely in terms of the principle of the change of use. It is crystal clear that A4 uses are allowed within that policy, and therefore to refuse a change of use on policy grounds, in my opinion, would be unsafe to an appeal. Furthermore, CH one confirms that evening economy uses, including A4, are acceptable along Church Street. This proposal will bring more people into the town centre in the daytime and evening, and this is what CH one seeks to achieve, and this is what this proposal will deliver. In terms of heritage matters, your conservation officer has assessed the plans and is supportive of the proposal. Planning law and policy confirms that for proposals affecting buildings of heritage importance, great weight should be afforded to finding a long-term use for the buildings, and this is the case here. By refusing this application, the town runs a risk of leaving historic buildings empty, which would detract significantly from this part of the town, given its prominent location. The applicant has provided significant information regarding the interior and exterior of the buildings, and this has led to the support and confirmation that the scheme complies with HE one. Having seen how the properties will look, there can be no doubt that the scheme will enhance the character and appearance of the conservation area, therefore comfortably passing the statutory test, which is simply to preserve the character or appearance. The environmental health officer also supports these applications, and therefore it is considered that this robust proposal should be approved so that work can start immediately. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lloyd.
Hello, I'm Tim Lloyd. I had two food establishments in Church Street, and the last time I was here was to get planning permission for the Captain's Club Hotels many years ago, so forgive me for that. But I can now start, yeah? As the owner operator of the Captain's Club Hotel, many people would think that I would be against this application owing to the fact that it will be competition. The truth is just the opposite. Indeed, I speak for many hospitality businesses in Christchurch who are fully in support of this application. We welcome competition. It is healthy. Christchurch has changed tenfold in the twelve years since we opened the Captain's Club Hotel. As a tourism destination market town, we offer a range of first-class accommodation across hotels, houses, and holiday parks. We boast numerous restaurants, from those serving A-razet quality food to the best fish and chips. We have a number of interesting and different bars at which to drink, and Tom's must be added to that list. We are a sociable town, which is a huge plus for the economy of Christchurch and must be recognised. Together, across hospitality, we employ a huge amount of people. Christchurch must continue to be forward-thinking. Don't just let retail premises be closed down and boarded up. Let us embrace the real-life situation we are being faced with and diversify. Give opportunities to the hospitality sector, but only when their operational credentials have been proven. The industry can be and is prosperous. Christchurch offers the great night out. People come to us to stay for a weekend. They may stay in the hotel for one night, but then on the other day, they have a wealth of opportunities to discover. People may say that I'm mad letting residents out of the hotel for my own sake, but it's completely to the contrary. People come back time and again to stay with us, to stay in Christchurch because of what the town has to offer, with its complete range of bars and eateries within easy-walking distance. This is a real plus for us as a business, and I know many towns must be envious of Christchurch and what it has to offer. It was the aim of the food festival when we launched twenty years ago to make Christchurch feature at the heart of the culinary offering in the South, a legacy that has been achieved and will continue to grow. Now we have the chance to improve this offering even further. This location is a prime site. It would be a wonderful legacy to Roberta herself to see this project come to fruition, and I endorse fully the professionalism of the operator. Tom was a fantastic member of the Captain's Club Hotel bar team some years ago and has developed his bar management skills further over recent years. Please embrace this opportunity, welcome the investment that Tom and his team are bringing to the table, and give this application your approval. Thank you.
Tom? Mr. Chairman and Committee, thank you very much. I'm Andy Dennison. I have Dennison's Estate Agents. I've worked in the town for forty years. Had my own business in the town for twenty-five. I occupy a site in Castle Street. I'm speaking from a position of concern. I'm concerned at looking at the empty shops that are sprouting up. Now, there's A2 shops that have closed down. There's no interest in retailing coming to these positions. And I'm just concerned on that basis, really. The demand for retail has reduced, as we know. The internet has taken that supply away. I think it's fair to say that businesses such as hairdressers or coffee shops, restaurants, gyms, which you can't buy on the internet, will still be out there and will take up occupancy, but they're not going to, I feel, pay the rents that the landlords will want. The landlords will then start to look at their revenue. They'll want to protect their investment, and they'll start to consider, I feel, looking at going back to residential. So perhaps there's a danger that some of this nice retail that we have will start to look at going back to residential. And it's already happened, I believe. Christopher Bulstroh, who's estate office, he's given up and gone back to residential. And obviously, we don't want to see that happen to the High Street. When we had the office in Leamington, I had a number of people say to me, gosh, you're lucky you live in Christchurch. It's such a vibrant town. I know for a fact people that used to get the taxi from Leamington just to have a night out in Christchurch. I think it's going the right way. I think people are buying property in this area, like the vibrancy. I've lived in the town centre now for twenty-seven years, in the actual town itself, in the heart of the town. I don't have any problems with people throwing glasses over the wall or anything like that. I feel we need to support this application. I think it adds to the vibrancy of the town. And therefore, that's my case.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Dennison. If you wouldn't mind, thank you for turning the mic off. That concludes the public speaking. Now, we've heard quite a lot of points that have been put forward, and I wonder if the officers would like to respond at this point.
No, Chairman, there wasn't anything specifically raised that we felt the need to counter at this point, but obviously if members have some questions, we're content to answer those.
Thank you. Then are there any questions of the council hall?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I do have quite a few questions, and I did get a letter today, which is surprising. But what I would like to ask is, first of all, when I said that it may be against non-retail policy, can I have confirmation if it is or not, please?
Chairman, yes. If I can go to the part of the report. The unit itself is in the secondary shopping frontage, not the primary shopping frontage. So the policy which applies is then CH seven. And you'll see that listed in the report. So that's development in the secondary shopping frontages. And then that refers to proposals, a change of use of non-residential premises located in the secondary shopping frontage, Bargate's, Wick Lane, Church Street, Castle Street. And changes of use from non-residential will be permitted provided that the following criteria are satisfied and that they fall within a number of uses, which includes Class A4 drinking establishments. And then the second criteria is that the amenities of local residents are not adversely affected by noise and disturbance or loss of light and privacy. So it is policy compliant, Chairman, our view with CH seven.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Another question, if I may. In the letter today, there's a lady written in saying that the access, you have right of access. Has that been checked by the planning department? Has one of our officers been round to check that?
Chair, we are guided by the applicant who says that, who advised us that they have a right of access over that land to deal with the refuse disposal issues. We have a difficulty through the planning permission in securing the use of a site outside of the red line, simply because it's under the applicant's control at this time, which is why there isn't a condition on the recommendation. So if members were concerned about the issues of waste and refuse disposal, it would be legitimate to apply a condition on the planning permission, and we could deal with that. And that would, in effect, we could control that within the planning unit itself, i.e. number one. I'm led to believe from the applicant that they can deal with these issues on a potentially a daily basis so that they actually don't generate huge amounts of need for waste disposal. So we're not looking at a large commercial wheelie bin on the pavement or anything like that, and you've heard that confirmation from the applicant. Certainly if members were concerned with that, we could attach a condition to that effect. But we do have a problem in planning terms in requiring use of a separate part of the premises simply because it's under their control at this time.
Thank you for that, but what another question?
May I come in at this point, please? Thank you. I am a little concerned. The Mrs. King at Three Castle Street says, and I quote from the letter, "The proposed alleyway, and as I understand it, this is the alleyway through which the bins will be moved, is part of my property." Now, if she's correct, and she says, "I am not allowing this to access through my property", then obviously we have, or the applicant is going to have a problem. then obviously we have, or the applicant is going to have a problem, because to go across somebody's land when you have no permission is trespass. And trespass, of course, is action about civil law. Now, it may well be that the applicant would wish to negotiate an agreement, if indeed this is her property, but we have a flat statement here saying, "The alleyway, the recycling bins, this alleyway, is my property." Now, okay, we have to, I think, take statements in good faith, but am I not correct that if the applicant were to establish that this is her property and were to forbid access, then the applicant would have a problem? And also our successors would have a problem because there'd be a lot of waste with nowhere to go?
Chairman, just a couple of points and clarification now. We're not here to be able to determine who owns what piece of land. It may be that applicant owns a piece of land, but a third party still has a right of way over that piece of land. If I could just advise the information that I've been given from the applicant. So this is described to me, "The bins will be used to transport refuse from number one Church Street to the compound in 1A Castle Street, and they would be small and compact, and they'd be not commercial wheelie bins that potentially cause blockages on the path." Their intention is to empty those not during early or late hours. Clearly, that's an issue which would be difficult for us to control. But it's their intention not to cause any potential noise and disturbance through emptying the bins at that time. I think I go back to my earlier point, which is if you were concerned about that, it would be feasible for us to attach a condition to require details of the refuse disposal and storage prior to commencement of the use as a condition on the consent.
Cername now. If I can just also clarify that the area of land which you've referred to, Council Hall, is not part of the application site, so therefore we have no way of controlling that. But if I can just take members to paragraph 8.24 of the report, it is acknowledged that waste could be taken through the property which is within the red line of the applicant and out of the back door to that same storage area. So there is a way that is within the red line. We acknowledge that the right of way, that we're told is a right of way through number three, the side gates at the east of number three, is not within the red line, and therefore we can impose no control over that. But there is a route through that property which does form part of the application site for which we have the correct certification necessary to make a valid planning application.
Thank you very much for that answer.
Again, I will just come back to this point because I'm very sorry, but this is the sort of thing which, without wishing to cause any offence whatsoever, tends to make lawyers a lot of money. If you have a case where somebody can say, "This is my land", and you're not going to do it, and again, I'm going to ask a legal question on this one. Am I right in thinking that that is not our problem? Our task here is to decide on matters solely within the red line, and whatever may come of legal action or indeed environmental action, which I'll be asking you to talk about later on, is not the problem that this committee has or can legitimately deal with.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, through you, you're correct. And as Mrs. Lynch, my colleague, has already identified, that area of land is not within the red line of the application before you today. So it's effectively beyond the local planning authority's control in that regards, and it becomes an issue of a private law matter between the applicant and the person who purports in this particular letter to say that it's their particular part of their property. So it's a private matter for the applicant to go away and arrange a private resolution of that particular issue. However, as Mrs. Lynch has also identified, there is a means within the red line, which is currently before you today, whereupon which the bins can be located to access that compound. Long answer to your short question, Chair, is that you're correct?
Counselor Hall, you wanted, you're in the middle of it, then I come to the vice chair.
Right, thank you very much. The other concern that was met, and I forgot to mention that this did come before the Christchurch Citizens Association meeting, which I attended, but I just listened to the debate, I took no part in their decision-making, so any letters that come in from the Christchurch Citizen, I wasn't involved with. And the second thing that did come up is the smoking area. And it is a concern to a lot of people because that is a very busy road, and to be stuck on the pavement which is narrow, surely if they've got other areas that they could use, wouldn't that alleviate the pavement area? Because it's quite a busy road, and even at night with traffic going through there. But to have a smoking area on the pavement outside doesn't seem to be a sensible idea, and it could be dangerous to pedestrians, so I would like that. I've got no problem with the principle of having a bar.
Counselor Hall, somewhere along the line, I think there was a question in there, and we are in questions. Yes, but you then went on to say, start saying about something else, so we'll stick to the questions, yeah.
Stick to the question, Mr. Chairman, is the fact that the smoking area is, in my opinion, could be dangerous for the pedestrians, and I'd like the officer to inform me, is there any other area where that could be used?
That's a valid question.
Chairman, the short answer is no, because there's no area to the rear of the building, it's entirely enclosed by other buildings. So it would have to follow that that would take place out on the street. We can't obviously suggest that won't happen, that clearly may happen as a result of the use. But the control of that is largely a matter for licensing because it's taking place outside the premises on the public highway. And similarly, we accept that the pavements are narrow in that location. The council was aware of that when it sought to allocate the site for a more permissive range of uses under the local plan, and that that hasn't changed in the interim. So we expect that to occur. The management of that falls mainly within the licensing regime, Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hall. Any further questions?
I was to say, thank you for that, and that I agree with the principle, but I just feel that is a very important area that should be carefully...
Quite sure where the question was in that bit, but Counselor Jameson?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just slightly confused, which is not difficult, as to the discussion we're having regarding disposal of waste. And if we could go to the red line slide, please. Now, can you explain to me, with that on the screen, where the alternative waste site is within the red line? Just so I can get my head around it, because...
Chairman, the alternative is to, that the applicant deals with the waste issues within the building. They have an option of using this area, or they've described to us that they have an option of using this area hereby, and access through here, across this area here, and storage in here. The issue that we have in attaching a condition to secure that is that lying outside of this planning application site, and it's simply an arrangement that they benefit from, or we're advised they benefit from, through rights of way and ownership of 1A. But the shop or any commercial use in here, which didn't have the benefit of access to any other land, would still have to deal with its refuse. So if the retail shop continued, they'll have deliveries, they've got ways, they generate issues, so they have to still deal with that potentially within the building. Does that help?
While we keep that slide on the screen, then, if you look at the figures 1A, there would appear to be what I would call a ransom strip outside the red line. So the red line finishes before you get to the pavement. Is that what the resident is referring to?
I'm not sure. It's the short answer that I think that's just reflective of the fact that this unit has a recessed frontage, Vice Chairman. And in terms of the 1A, Chairman, that is 1A, at my understanding, yeah? And then the access through, archway through is three at this point on the arrow here. So in terms of that setback on the Ordinance Survey Plan, which I presume you're referring to there, my understanding is that's simply representing the fact that... The chairman's shaking his head, but my understanding is that's simply reflecting the fact that this frontage is set back from that street level there.
Could we just go back to the record?
Could I just come in at this point? I'm very sorry, and I feel very uneasy about challenging the officer's wisdom at this point, but in another existence, when we have looked at highways' property, at highways, the highway, i.e. that which is under the control for the moment of Dorset County Council, is the pavement. Now, the gap between if that bit there, which I do not think is in the control of the county council, it must be in somebody's control. And what is concerning, I think, the vice chairman, is that if the, all the other properties where we've looked at this sort of problem, and we've said, "The curtilage of your land goes to where the highway stops." So here we have a gap, and if the purpose of this is to say, "Look, you can get the rubbish out, and then we can go round the front and down through there and across", this again is an unresolved matter. Again, I don't think it specifically affects our consideration of the planning application in that the application for planning, the applicant states, and we have to accept that he states it in good faith, is that he has control over a means of getting refuse from number one Church Street to the disposal area at the back of number 1A, the alleyway, which causes concern to the lady at number three Castle Street. So I would venture to suggest that while this looks, if the development does go ahead to be a very fruitful field for all sorts of legal challenges, can the officer or our legal adviser advise us as to whether this is something that we should, we can legitimately worry over?
Thank you, Counselor Jones. I think the key thing here is what Mr. Hodges has referred to, which is that the applicant has suggested that they can make use of this open area at the back here. Whether or not they have the rights to access it, they are telling us that they do, but I think in many ways that is a little bit of a red herring, because what Mr. Hodges has just referred to is that this is a retail unit, it's a standalone retail unit. Any retail outlet is going to generate waste, it's going to need storage areas, so that is no different for this use. And what we are suggesting is that we can impose a condition which would require a waste strategy, if you like, how they're going to manage waste, and I think we can do that and say that they need to have a strategy on how they manage it within the footprint of number one. So I don't think, we don't know, Mr. Lucas has looked up, and we can confirm that it doesn't look from our plans as if this bit of land is within the highways' control. We don't know who owns that land. The red line has clearly been drawn around what the applicant feels can be demonstrated as land over which they have some control. So I think the issue is, I would suggest that we are looking at a condition that waste storage is fully contained within here, and that prior to commencement of any change of use, there needs to be a strategy submitted to us and approved that we are convinced is functional and deliverable.
I think when we move into debate, then members may indeed wish to propose a suitable condition, if indeed the committee is minded to approve the application. But I think we should now leave the waste problem and move on to any further questions. Counselor Jameson? Are there any further questions? Counselor Hallam?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we just go back to the picture that had got sort of the roof line? Because I just want to go to next another one, but let's show, that's another one? No, there was another one, that's it, that one, yeah. So we talked a little bit, and we've heard some comment around movement of airflow and then potential smells that might sort of be extracted out. I just really want to confirm that that's currently some sort of air conditioning unit or some sort of unit that's on the back there? What currently is there at the moment?
I don't know precisely, Chairman, but that's my understanding of the unit, yes.
And does that service the downstairs number one, or is that for one of the flats? Do we know?
I'm afraid I can't answer that.
Okay. My point is, we've already got something there, so I'm guessing that it wouldn't be too distracted to have something else going forward.
Should our successor have a slightly more traditionally-minded chairman? He might say, and I'm sure Counselor Hallam wishes to get in practice, that all comments should be directed through the chair.
Apologies, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any further questions? Counselor Geary?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. You'll see that that's an issue raised in the report by your environmental health officers about the impact on neighbouring properties. So they recommend conditions, and we're looking at paragraph 8.18. So your environmental health officers suggested about conditions in relation to the closure on the entrance door, so in effect the entrance door is not prepped open, soundproofing and a restriction on live music within the site, and we're content to suggest those and recommend those to you as conditions, and also the further one about the opening hours, which is condition six in your report, Chairman.
Bora Bowis?
Non-practicing mind. Thank you, Chair, through you. So there's a parallel regime as well, Counselor. So in the Licensing Act 2003, there are certain licensing objectives, and four of those deal with, if you like, the amenity points as well as general safety points. They're the prevention of crime and disorder, so any applicant for a licence for alcohol or a premises licence has to bear in mind the prevention of crime and disorder. Public safety points, so that will be when a fire officer will look at the actual fire precautions that are available in terms of meeting the fire regulations. The prevention of public nuisance, which is obviously in relation to public health and the environmental health officer, but not only statutory nuisance, but nuisance in other guises that could be non-statutory. So litter, for example, that could come from the property, and so on and so forth. And the final one is the protection of children from harm. So those four licensing objectives are dealt with in a parallel regime, not before you today, members at all, but hopefully do provide some sort of comfort in the sense that any premises licence application under the licensing regime will look at those four particular objectives also.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Yes, that's why we feel the need to cover that as part of condition four, requiring a scheme for acoustic insulation between the ground and first floor. That will defend...
defend noise between the use and the flat on the first floor and also benefit um, the flat on the second floor as well, Chairman.
Councillor Jameson?
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Oh, sorry, Councillor Hallam?
Thank you, sorry, I just had a couple more questions. Um, just really following on from, um, councillor Geary. In terms of noise, obviously glass is quite a loud noise, um, when emptied. Is it, would it be possible to sort of put any conditions around that to, to caveat that, that sort of noise for sort of emptying the, the, the glass bins at the end of the night, for example?
Yes, yes, I think, um, Chairman, it would, it would be legitimate to, um, require the applicant to enter into, um, in effect, a management plan related to issues such as, um, emptying of, uh, bins, glass, those sorts of noise issues and control those during the daylight hours and in the interest of good neighbourliness. Um, and if members felt, um, that was necessary as part of any approval of the scheme, they'd be legitimate to attach that.
Thank you, that's fine, thank you.
Right, we're now moving to debate. Councillor Hall, you're the local member.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Well, I have listened very carefully to the debate and I'm very happy with the, um, buyer application. I think to have an upmarket buyer is an asset to the town, but it does worry me about the safety for pedestrians in the smoking area. And that is a concern. So, Mr Chairman, that's all I would like to say on that matter and, um, I'll leave it to others to decide.
Vice Chairman, you indicated?
Uh, thanks, Chairman. Well, we are not the Citizens Association or a community partnership or anything like that. We are here in a quasi-judicial manner, so we have to, we have to determine not on what we want, we have to determine not on what we like, but we have to determine on what is lawful. And we have to do this in a, I, I would say in a somewhat sterile manner, looking at the facts that have been presented before us. I think taking the point that this is a high-profile building within the town, taking the point that it has not been able to be rented and the proposal that is before us is to turn it into a, what I would call from the evidence that I've been, uh, given this evening, is a, a a high, a high-class wine bar with, I would have thought something like thirty covers, which is targeted at a mature, a mature range of clients. So it's not a pub. And, and bars which there are in the area do not appear to lead to excessive noise or nuisance, uh, in the evening. So I think that there's no reason to suggest that this would be anything other than what it is purported to be. And I'm sure it would defend its position by being reassuringly expensive, like Waitrose, I guess. So, so the, the challenge that we have is that there is no reason in the constitution for us to turn this down. And if we were to, this is important because should members refuse this application tonight, then those members who refuse this application will be, uh, answerable to the Planning Inspectorate and not the council being, being, um, answerable to the Planning Inspectorate because the, we would be going against the professional uh, advice that we have been given. However, the caveat to that is that should members approve the application tonight, then they are in a strong position to put on conditions which have been discussing over the last ten, fifteen, twenty minutes or so. Conditions for this and conditions for that. Now, if the application is refused against the, against the advice of the officers and the, uh, application was determined by the one person Planning Inspectorate, that person would not, from our experience, put the conditions on that we are able to do. So we are in a strong position by approving the application with conditions rather than turning the application down, having the Planning Inspectorate put the cond, uh, put the, uh, approve the application uh, without any conditions because that would put the residents in a far worse situation. And I think the, the follow-on to that is emerging legislation, I understand, would, would allow this change of use to be done anyway in the future, in the not-too-distant future, without any recourse to the council, the planning, uh, and the local, uh, planning establishment, be that here or be that in the emerging authority. So, so equally, under those circumstances, you would not be able to put on conditions. So we are, the, the strong position that we're in is whether we like it or not is not our issue. But if we were to put the conditions on, then it would protect the residents from the perception of the noise and nuisance that, that, uh, is concerning everybody. So on that basis, Chairman, I'm happy to, um, propose the, uh, the application with the, uh, conditions that have been put forward this evening that cover, um, uh, the secondary, um, uh, waste management and noise and, and that and, and, uh, I think other, other conditions that have been, uh, discussed already, perhaps you can.
Thank you very much. Uh, that is a proposal. That is a proposal for approval as set out with the conditions mentioned. Do I see a seconder? That is seconded. Is there any further debate? Councillor Mrs Jones?
Mr Chairman, the Vice Chairman has been very eloquent about telling us that we cannot refuse. Could I ask, is it possible to abstain? Because I feel there are flaws in this application. Yes, there are good points, but I'm very worried about this prospect of people being encouraged to go outside onto the pavement on a very narrow strip of road in one of the busiest corners in the whole of Christchurch. And I would have thought there was a great safety concern here. And for that reason, I could not give all hearted support.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? I shall, I shall be voting on this item, so I shall give my reasons.
Just to come back to the point that councillor Jameson raised, um, we feel that there is one condition which will pick up the areas of concern that members have raised, and that is all around waste. And what we would suggest is there is one additional condition which requires the submission of a waste strategy, which would cover both the area of storage and the removal of waste from the site. So it could all be collected into, or combined within one condition.
Chairman, just, could I just come back on and look at that, the point that was particularly made, which was the disposal of, 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 of glass bottles? Because we all, we've all been, I think, in, in establishments where clanging of bottles is really quite a, a, a penetrating noise.
Thank you. As I said, I shall be voting on this. I'll give members some reasons, some, I think, indication, indication of my reasons. For the twenty years I have sat on this committee, I have lost count of the number of times I have used the phrase, "We are not here to construe according to our wishes, we are here to construe according to the law." And my wish would be to vote to refuse this application. I am very concerned about people spilling out for a cigarette or vape or whatever they do onto the pavement. I am concerned that this is going to obstruct the street for people, particularly wheelchair users, mobility scooter users, because they have a right to get there. I am concerned even more about the noise because I have been through, um, Christchurch when the night time economy is in full vibrancy. And it ain't what it was like when I was young. And yes, I agree that that is a long time ago, but it does go on and it goes on later and later and later. And if you're living upstairs trying to get to sleep, it's not going to be a lot of fun. So I have to say, I am very concerned about the noise, I'm concerned about the safety. Yes, I know you are not allowed to smoke in an establishment. It seems a very funny law that says you have to look after your lungs in twenty or thirty years' time at the price of stepping out of the pavement and becoming a road traffic accident. But that is the law. So I am in the position that on the basis of what I have seen here, I cannot vote to support this application. But equally, I think the officer has a point. If this were turned down, I do not think the applicant would even wait to lodge, as he said, an expensive appeal. Because I think he would sit and wait, fight the fight of sit down and wait for the government, as it has said it would, to change the rules. So I have to say, I mean, that, that presupposes that there are still the government next week, but, you know, that, that may or may not be, um, a fact. But again, we can't take that into account. I don't like this application. We have a lot of bars in Christchurch, we have a lot of noise in Christchurch. But when you are in this position and you can't win, I think what you have to do is look for the way of minimizing the damage. And what I would be, wish to see, and if the officers can answer this, it would help and I think it might help other members of the committee. We have been told that, yes, you have conditions about the noise. We have been told that there will be soundproofing between the, the flat on the first floor and, uh, Miss Parkinson's flat, I think, on the second floor. But you know and I know, noise goes through the fabric of a building rather than just straight up through the roof. So I wonder. We have had once before a an occasion where a facility, a night time economy facility, not a million miles where I live, from where I live, was actually applying for an extended licence or for an improvement to, or it's a big part of an improvement to its planning position. And the, our legal advisor then gave some very, very excellent advice to the objectors. Because of course we are not just concerned with the planning laws, the planning, a planning approval doesn't give permission for it to happen. All it says is, there is no reason in planning law why it shouldn't happen. There are other stages to go through before it can be built out and there are other stages on top of that before it can be, which could apply during its operation. So I wonder if, uh, Mr Lucas could mention something about uh, the environmental health position, which may have been some comfort to those, and I really do appreciate your position, who feel that they are going to lose their quality of life because of this.
Thank you, Chair, for, yeah, putting me in the difficult position. Um, the simple point is, if this is, is to be, and if you're minded to grant the actual application before you today, there are other steps, as the Chair has already mentioned, in the sense that for the sale of alcohol, it needs a premises licence. That is a parallel regime, a regulatory regime. It may also need a licence for regulated entertainment. So that is the playing of, of music beyond a terminal hour. And that will be within the auspice of the Licensing Authority going forward also. There are also fallback positions in relation to the position for music and entertainment in that as a matter of law, the Live Music Act says a licensed premise can play music without the need to have a licence for that particular regulated entertainment. So from the hours of eight AM until eleven PM, the Live Music Act says you don't need a licence for that. Beyond eleven PM, you do. So there are, there are fallback positions here in the sense that as soon as it becomes a, a use that is before you today, parallel regimes deal with those issues or concerns. Noise, music and so on and so forth. Public nuisance, people coming out of the premise, standing on the corner. So the licensing regime can quite rightly deal with that issue. Would it be a public nuisance for someone to walk on a lawful highway? That will be the question for the Licensing Committee. Whether or not it's a question for the Planning Committee when there's no highways issues here, it's probably not properly engaged in terms of, is it a planning concern? Because the report deals with the planning policies here. The remainder point is essentially that parallel regime picks up a lot of the public concern. So there will be an application that has to be made for the sale of alcohol. And as soon as that licence or that application is triggered, in come those four licensing objectives that I've previously mentioned. Public nuisance, prevention of crime and disorder, um, safety, public safety and so on. They will bite upon this particular site in a planning sense, as well as a licensing sense. There's only so much that a local planning authority can do when it looks at a change of use. And that is, if there are amenity concerns, it can put a condition on it. And you've heard already the environmental health officer's advice. You've heard about the condition on the terminal hour, um, in relation to the particular application site. And if I turn you to the conditions again, and my colleagues quite rightly identified, there is a condition on here also proposed. No live music or amplified recorded music, except through the in-house background music system, is permitted at any time. So there is a strong condition here which removes, if you like, the statutory right to play regulated entertainment up to the hour of eleven PM. That condition on this planning permission bites. So for the applicant to want to have live music or amplified recorded music will mean another application coming before the local Planning Committee for release of that very stringent condition. That will mean it's back in your control and gift as to whether or not you would want to release that condition here. So that condition is quite strong, despite the fact that the Live Music Act allows regulated, regulated entertainment to be played without the need for a licence, a premises licence under the Licensing Act. That deals, I think, with the concerns about noise, music, issues as to waste and the noise from bottles. There is a proposal for that added condition. And I think the, the proposer is happy to accept that, um, as indeed the seconder as well. And that will deal with the bottle noise in terms of amenity concerns coming from this application in a planning sense and alleviating that particular issue. So what do we have? One, no live or recorded amplified music being played on this site because of a very strong planning condition. Two, a potential condition before you members to actually deal with the bottle noise via a rate, waste management scheme. The third point about people coming out onto the highway, it is a highway, that's what it's for. People can walk up and down lawful passage, a highway is a highway. it's for, people can walk up and down lawful passage, a highway is a highway, from point A to point B for aggress and pedestrians. There is no concern in law with someone smoking on the streets, even a crowd, if they want to congregate outside of a bus stop, outside of that enclosed space, and smoking. So where is the harm in the sense of potentially people coming from that site, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten? That is not illegal. It is illegal if they smoke in that premise. So the applicant is damned if he does and damned if he doesn't. If he allows smoking, it's a criminal matter within the premise. Outside of his control is the highway. It's not illegal to smoke on the highway. So the concerns that are expressed in planning terms, yes, there are concerns, the bottles, the music, but the conditions I respectfully submit deal with those concerns. In terms of it going to licensing for a premises licence for the sale of alcohol, again, it will be before another committee, where these issues can properly be mooted and expressed. But they're for licensing. That's all I have to say really, Chair, about the issues that you're concerned on, and I hope it helps clarify matters.
Thank you. I think that's a very, very clear exposition. Just because this application is granted does not give the applicant carte blanche to do what he wants. There will be conditions on the application, there are effective controls that can be brought in to environmental health, if any of the, any member of the public wishes to give advice or be given guidance as to where these may be found, I'm sure one of the officers will give them, and certainly I think any of your, either of your ward councillors will be pleased to help you. So I have to say, I don't like it, I won't support it, but I would, I accept that it is going to be, it is better than an empty shop front. But because of what is said, I do not believe that there are grounds in planning law to refuse this application. There are ample possibilities outside planning law in other fields to control the activities of this application. And I know it sounds a bit chicken to say I'm going to abstain, but because I think the arguments are balanced, and I do not think there are grounds for approval, but I dislike the application for the reason I mentioned, I shall abstain. Sorry?
One last point.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair, for the point, I should have mentioned that it slipped my mind when I was obviously dealing with your question. Under the Licensing Act two thousand and three, any member of the public or a statutory body, such as trading standards, the police, or the fire authority, can call in a licence for review. So soon, and if this matter is given planning permission, and if it's given a premises licence, as soon as that premises licence is granted, there are stringent controls, there needs to be a designated premises supervisor. That designated premises supervisor has to pass a qualification to become a personal licence holder. That means, of course, a BTech or a City and Guilds. So that designated premises supervisor has to be trained, to have to hold a personal licence so as to be able to sell alcohol. So there are steps. As soon as that's done, as soon as there's a designated premises supervisor, DPS, and premises licensed, any member of the public can call that licence in for review before the licensing committee. And it could be on the basis of noise, it could be on the basis of rowdy behaviour, it could be on the basis of drunkenness, poor management, the need for door supervisors, and so on and so forth. So as soon as that Licensing Act application is engaged, there is within the community's gift to call, if they feel there are grounds to do so, for a review of that premises licence. And it will come back to the licensing committee, and it could mean more stringent conditions, door supervisors at cost to the licence holder. It could mean, for example, some sort of management plan, so as to have security checks for bags, if there is any concern about drugs, which I'm not even suggesting here, but there are ways in which the controls can be placed, and the community has that gift and that right to bring the licence back for review. And I think it's right that the community is aware of that statutory provision, because it's there for you. So if it gets permission tonight, and if it gets a premises licence, and if there is a DPS appointed to look after and become, if you like, the overseer of that premise, there is essentially the sword of Damocles, in the sense that it has to be properly managed, it has to be properly run. And if it isn't, then obviously it comes back for a review.
Thank you very, very much, Mr Lucas, and that is very clear. councillor Jamieson, you were indicating?
Thank you, Chairman, and I know you're anxious that this should go to the vote, but I just think it's worth my comment, which I perhaps should have mentioned in debate, is that of noise in the area, and my understanding, and I have spent a little bit of time down that part of the town in the evening, noise from other premises, noise from the taxi rank, noise travels across the street, through the air, and I think that the danger of noise nuisance is far greater from other establishments in the area than it would be from the type of establishment that is being proposed here this evening, similar perhaps to the other wine bar that's just around the corner, creating very little external noise to, and no nuisance. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I am going to go to the vote now, but I would ask, and I know members of the public will probably, most of you, want to make a break for the door as soon as the vote is over, but if I could ask you just to remain for a few seconds, I do have something else to say, but that will be outside this debate. So can I say to members, it is proposed and seconded for approval as set out, all those in favour, and I shall vote, please show. One, two, three. Those against? And abstentions?
I'm still concerned about pedestrian safety.
Thank you. And can I have my abstention noted, please? Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, the point that I'm going to make, I think is particularly relevant.
Chairman, just this point, we haven't told what's happened.
Sorry?
There's a second application.
Was proposed and seconded, that is approved.
Solicited building application.
Oh, listed building application, sorry. The listed building application is proposed and seconded for approval, all those in favour, please show. Against? Abstentions? Thank you.
Same reason.
Same reason, thank you. Anything else? We got that right?
That's approved, right.
Thank you, that is approved. This committee will not be here in a month's time. However, you are the community. You've heard the officer say how much it is up to you, in favour or opposed. Those who are supporting it, if it turns out to be worse than you expected, I hope you would support it. The objectors, those who have been objecting, if it turns out to be all right, I hope you would support in addition to the town's economy. But you heard also about designate, about public bodies. While this Borough Council will not be here, there will be a town council. The town centre ward will have six members. Any of those members, I am sure, and I've no idea who they're going to be, it may even be some of you would like to be there. Those of you who are, those who are elected will be responsible to you, they will be able to raise these matters on your behalf. So the fact that this has gone through, please, we have approved it, and the committee, I think, was strongly in favour of it, but those against, there are ways forward. Now, I think nearly everybody will wish to leave, so I'll adjourn for five minutes. Committee stands adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, now for the very last application for this Borough Council, and it's Mrs Maudslay, who has the honour of introducing it.
Thank you, Chairman. This is To Water Mead, twenty-three Willow Way. Firstly, just like to draw members' attention to the update sheet. Since the agenda was published, we've received a consultation response from the council's coastal engineer. You'll see, he makes some comments on the proposed surface water drainage scheme, and I'll come back to those comments further on in my presentation. I've also done a revised table on the third page, with just some changes to the width and depth of the property and some of the distances to the boundaries of the site. You'll also see a couple of conditions that I proposed to amend, and again, I'll touch on them later on. Scheme is for a replacement single-storey dwelling with an attached carport and a raised deck to the south. This is an amended scheme to a previously approved one early two thousand and seventeen. The property is already partially constructed on the site, but the principle of the contemporary replacement dwelling is already established. Here we have the location, site outlined in red. The site is within an established residential area on the edge of the River Stour and to the south. And this area here is a shared green amenity area with no boundary treatments in between, which you can see from the aerial photograph. Here we have the footprint and the ground floor plan. The actual footprint of the house, the main house, is not changing. You can see, hopefully you can see the blue line, which goes around the edge here, is the previously approved position, and that is not changing. The main revisions to this scheme are the height and the footprint of the carport, which is located here. Again, it's a bit faint, but the original blue line came down here and was in that position. Furthermore, in terms of the terrace at the rear, there is an extra element along the eastern boundary, which wasn't part of the approved scheme. It's just the front of the site in a bit more detail, there are some differences in the ground levels between the site and the adjacent sites. There is a difference of naught point six metres between the ground level at the entrance gate here, coming off Water Mead, and the ground level beneath the carport, located here. Furthermore, there's a difference of naught point five metres between the rear of number five, which is this property here, and the ground level at the carport, and an increase of naught point five six metres between this carport and this point on the eastern boundary and this point on the western boundary.
Sorry, hold on, can I actually just stop? This is right, I'm very sorry, I've just noticed Mrs Jones is back. Can you go and check with Wendy? Wendy, I think. Daniel, let Wendy go in case she's in there.
We're just worried about you.
Let's not go back.
Yeah, could you recap? Mrs Maudslay, just recap, because it's a very short period, you missed councillor Jones, so I'll get the plan. You can do, we're going to recap for you, we're only very slightly into the, yeah, we'll recap, yeah, that's fine.
You can't get at the chocolate biscuits, yeah.
I'll start, I'll start again. Just to refer you to the update sheet, we've had some extra comments from the coastal engineer, from the council. There are some changes to the measurements in the table three, and I've redone the table on the third page, and then there's some changes to the, to other conditions, which I'll go into detail later. Okay, so this is the site outlined in red, and you can see the open area to the south of the property is adjacent to the River Stour. The property has already been partially constructed on the site, and the principle of this contemporary replacement dwelling has already been established. Okay, just going over the footprint, the footprint of the main house is not being altered from the approved scheme. The main changes relate to the carport at the front of the site, which is being reduced in area and height, and also the additional terrace area at the rear along the eastern boundary. Just going over the changes, differences in the ground level at the front of the site. You can see here at the entrance gate off Water Mead, it's one AOD, and at the carport, it's one point six. And at the carport, it's 1.6, so the difference of, increase of 0.6 in the ground level. There's an increase of 0.5 metres between the rear of number five and the front of the site, and 0.56 metres between the front of the site at this point and on the eastern boundary here by my arrow, and also on the western boundary, my arrow is pointing to it. Here we have the proposed roof plan, and the photo at the bottom is from the roof looking back towards number five. There is no proposed use of this roof, except for maintenance, and this is controlled by a proposed condition eight in the report. Okay, yeah, and just to clarify, in this photograph, there's, you can see the existing carport structure, which would be amended if this scheme gets approved. This is the proposed front elevation, and there are no changes to this from the approved plans. Just some photos showing the context of the site and what's existing at the moment. So this is the front elevation, and you can see the existing structure of the carport. This is along the eastern boundary, and this is the adjacent bungalow. And this is taken from Watermead, looking towards the front of the site. And you can clearly see the existing carport. And this here is the balcony of number five. This is the proposed rear elevation, addressing the river. You can see the adjacent conservatory here on the adjacent bungalow. And the difference, and this is the brick wall area, is where the new terrace is going to be. These are the proposed elevations at the front of the site, showing the differences between the approved carport, which you can see with the blue line, and this proposed scheme shows, shows the reduced scale of this. It was 4.2 metres in height, but it's now proposed to be three metres. And you can see it set away from the rear, the boundary with number five and its balcony, which serves a lounge. And a cross section looking back towards number five and its balcony. And again, the blue line just denotes the previously approved roof of their carport. Some photos, I'm stood on the balcony of number five, looking. And you can see the metal girders of the existing structure, looking eastwards at, to the front of the site. And then at the bottom, I'm actually on the ground within the site. And that's the balcony of number five there, where my arrow is, looking towards the western boundary. These are proposed east and west elevations of the entire house. And this is the side here, the eastern, that will face the adjacent bungalow with the conservatory. Given the extension to this terrace, it is now proposed to put a 1.6 metre obscure glade screen along parts of this terrace up to this point here, to help the privacy of the occupiers of the adjacent bungalow. As explained in the report, there is a change in the levels between these two sites. And given the finished floor level of the new house, the screen and terrace will appear higher from next door at 2.8 metres. However, this is considered to be acceptable and will protect the privacy of the neighbouring occupiers. This is a photograph from within the house at the bottom, and this is the new access point from the main master bedroom out onto the extended terrace area. You can see from this, this plan, they're also proposing a new hedge along the eastern boundary to help the impact on next door. And this is going to be secured by condition five in the report. And just some further photographs, stood on the terrace at the back of the house, looking back towards the adjacent bungalow with their conservatory. And this area here is the extended terrace bit, part of this scheme. There have been concerns raised with the drainage on the, on the site. It is proposed to use accu-drains, which are around the perimeter of the front of the site, along with a soakway in the middle of the driveway at the front. And then new drains will be located at the rear, which will drain directly into the river. However, going back to the update sheet, you'll note that the engineer has concerns with the use of a soakway on the site, although the building control have agreed that that's an acceptable solution. So therefore, I have amended condition nine, to say that further details of a drainage plan need to be submitted to the local planning authority, just so we can ensure that we have an adequate surface water drainage plan in place, given the difference in opinion.
Thank you very much, Mrs Maudslay. We have one speaker in favour of this, Mr Jones, if you'd like to come to the table, please. And you have three minutes. Again, if you'd like to introduce yourself, and then the clock will start.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. My name is Brett Jones. I'm chair of the owners' management company within Watermead, which are a development of 20 houses, as you saw in that plan. My reason for speaking, I think, in the main has been mitigated by the, the report now before you. But we are, of course, very pleased with the revision that has been agreed or undertaken. And I am grateful, we are grateful, to members and officers for the support of the residents within our, within Watermead that have been affected by this development. My queries, which I did want to raise, have been principally concerning the water on the site. As you will see from the plans, Watermead is a open-plan site with no walls or large high fences or in the area. And therefore, water would have a potential detrimental effect on any of the adjoining houses and the, and the rest of the site. My only other concern that's not, hasn't been raised, if I may, is the relation to the walls, which are to the, near to the soakway. And that's the wall on this side of the adjacent to the roadway on, on, yeah, that one there. And again, I point out that this is an open-plan site, and it would be, I would ask the applicant to consider whether or not we, that wall could be revised in some way to make it more acceptable to the rest of the estate. Other than that, thank you, Chairman, and we are grateful for all our support.
Before we begin, this application, as some members may be aware, has, I think the term these days is a backstory. We are not interested in that backstory. We are here to decide a planning application, admittedly, to some extent retrospective, because it has been begun. But we can only concentrate on the merits or demerits of this application before us. Anything else, anything other than that, is not a material planning application, and I will rule it out of order. We are not interested in how we got here. We are interested in how we get out of where we are now. So with that caveat, councillor Hall, your town centre member.
What I would like, Mr Chairman, if I may, is just on page 26, because the external ground floor, and I think it's been already mentioned by Mr Jones, that it is higher by two feet or 1.6 metres. I'll put it in two feet, because I know you like imperial dimensions. And I am concerned, and the officer did mention, that that could be a new drain putting in there to the river. But I do think, of course, there's two feet difference between the levels. Is that drain going to be sufficient?
Thank you, Chairman. We will make sure that it is through the information that we receive through the condition.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Well, I think I ought to thank officers, but also, I think, I ought to thank very much the owner of number two, Mr Kim Slater, for being a very decent gentleman in agreeing to alter this, because in the first place, it was a really outrageous planning that had been granted. Yes, that's the truth, Mr Chairman.
I'm sorry, I said, I don't want to look at the backstory. What we're looking at is this particular application.
I do think we should thank Mr Slater for being such a decent gentleman, agreeing to this, because it is a new proposal, and I'm happy to propose as set out, providing they're looking at that drain. And I think it is very important that we do support this, because it has been quite an anxious and stressful time for the next door resident. But I am pleased that we have now arrived at this, and I'm very happy to propose it. Thank you.
Ace the other ward, councillor.
Thank you. And through you, Chairman, I'm happy to second this motion and with the everything that's set out. And I also would like to thank Mr Slater for going through with all the different things that have been dealt with. Thank you.
And Q, is there any further debate? As there is no further debate, we'll move straight to the vote. All those in favour, and I shall vote. That is unanimous.
Chairman, yes, thank you. I'm happy to just describe this. Yes, this is an application in Avenue Road in Walkford. And that is an area in our, the 2001 Christchurch local plan, which is identified as being of particular character. And in this particular case, certainly the inspector gave some weight to the prevalent character of the area in dismissing the, the scheme for two houses. In particular, they felt that resulting cramped nature of the development, the sighting of the dwellings forward of the prevalent building line generally added up to a development which was outkeeping and harmful to the appearance of the area. And the benefits of the additional housing didn't outweigh those harmful impacts of the character. So we were pleased clearly to win that particular appeal for those reasons. And it shows that the inspectors are still having regard to those parts of the the 2001 local plan, which were retained at this time.
I would not like to let this meeting pass without saying one or two words, but I don't want to go on and on. One of my six former said to me once, "Mr Jones, is it true that your paper, the number of howevers and therefor's you put into your notes?" So I'm going to ask Daniel to start the clock for me, so it'll be three minutes. And then we'll, shut up, Jameson. And then we can all go home, okay? Ladies and gentlemen, I've been on this planning committee more years than I care to think. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time as chairman of Three Spells. And I've enjoyed working with all of the members in councillor hall. And even the, and all of the officers. I worked with, I think, five different heads of planning. I think we've, in general, got on very well, though we have had the occasional difference of opinion. But by and large, I think we've got there. I know that you're, or some of you are going on to other places. That's especially true to the officers, who know you're going somewhere. But I hope, know that many of the other members wish or hope that they're going somewhere as well. So I think it unlikely that we'll meet here again. And I know this is going to be one of the difficult elections, probably both the town council and the unitary. Can I wish that, at the end of it, everybody here thinks that they've done everything possible, if you are standing for re-election, to win that re-election? And that you will go on to serve, although it won't be the borough anymore, but you will go on to serve this town as faithfully as you have done it up to now. Thank you for your friendship. Thank you sometimes for your opposition, because somebody once said, "The greatest gift a man can have is a good friend, and the next greatest gift is a great enemy." So can I thank everybody for everything? Particularly, I will wish Jane and Linda all the very best. Jane is going to Bournemouth. Linda has decided she doesn't want to associate with Jane anymore, so she's going to Dorset. Sophie, I think, is going to Bournemouth, as is Dan. I think Daniel is going to Dorset. And we have, I should have congratulated earlier. We have our new town clerk. The town clerk of what I hope will become the ancient borough of Christchurch. Well, we can't be a borough. Thirty seconds. Thank you all. Have a really good evening. And I now formally close the last meeting of the Christchurch Borough Council Planning Committee. One thing I will ask the officers. How did they get planning permission for the priory?